Good afternoon. This is Thursday, December fourteenth, two thousand and twenty-three. We're here at the Committee of the Whole Meeting. It's three thirty P. M. I'd like to introduce myself. I'm Council President Nick J. Mosby. And we're here to talk to the Department of Finance regarding Legislative Oversight, LO twenty-three dash zero zero four nine, the structural imbalances of the city of Baltimore. To my left, we have Councilman Zeke Cohen, Councilwoman Odette Ramos, Chair Eric Costello, Chairman Robert Stokes, and Councilwoman Felicia Porter. Here we have the amazing Mr. Larry Green, who will be our facilitator of today's discussion from Legislative Services. We also have Council Services, always mix it up in Annapolis. We also have Mr. Nathan Poole from the Council President's Office. And from, we have Mr. CFO and your team. If you guys can announce yourself on the mic, please.
Good afternoon. My name is Michael Moxton. I'm the Chief Financial Officer for the city of Baltimore.
Thank you, Mr. CFO.
Hey, Bob Sannemi, Deputy Finance Director.
Thank you, Mr. Deputy.
Laura Larson, Budget Director.
Thank you, Madam Budget Director. With that, just really an opportunity, I know a couple of weeks ago, it was reported about the structural deficit. You know, obviously, with the new roles and responsibilities of the Baltimore City Council, from a budget perspective, we've literally tried to work to turn the budget process in just a couple of weeks, in working with the administration to, you know, a full year of really being focused on the budget. You know, from there, we developed the Finance and Performance Committee, work hand in hand with Ways and Means. And we've had some of these hearings directly with agencies, but we wanted to hear directly from finance on, I guess, some of the concerns that you guys are projecting out. That way, everyone's kind of on the same page. You know, a lot of times, legislation that will come out of different committees have unintended consequences, particularly financial consequences. This council has pushed in the past to, you know, have financial impact statements for legislation that was generated independently. We're still working towards professionalizing the council that way. But with that, we thought that this was such a critical issue and so important that going into the next year, we should kind of be aware and on board with. So with that, I'm not sure who's going to lead us today, Madam Budget Director or Mr. CFO, but the floor is yours right now.
Wonderful. Well, thank, Council President Mosby and Councilmembers, thank you very much for the opportunity to present to you this afternoon. What we'll be doing is walking through our preliminary forecast for fiscal year twenty-five and also talking about what that forecast looks like when we project it out over the ten-year horizon. So, starting off, just in terms of fiscal twenty-five, so, we are currently projecting a budget shortfall for the city in the general fund of about one hundred and seven point three million dollars for the upcoming year. Now, you can see that we are projecting that our general fund revenues will be growing by about two point seven percent, or just over sixty-one million dollars, whereas our expenditures are projected to grow by about seven point seven percent, or just over a hundred and seventy million dollars. So what that means is, based off of these initial forecasts for the upcoming fiscal year, our expenditures are growing nearly three times as fast as the rate of what our revenues can sustain. So when we talk about a structural budget imbalance, many of these expenditures that we're talking about in this growth are reoccurring costs year over year. And so what we really need to do is look to, how do we bring these two numbers into alignment, so that we're not starting the budget planning process with such a gap? I will say, these numbers that I'm presenting to you today, they reflect what we call the current level of service estimates. And so these are forecasts that were developed by my team in the early fall. And what we did was, we took, on the expenditure side, we took expenditures and we made adjustments for items that anticipate, you know, essentially, what would it cost us to provide the same level of service that we're providing today in fiscal twenty-five? And on the revenue side, what we did was, we looked at all of the major revenue streams coming into the general fund. We looked at trends through all of fiscal twenty-three and data that we had preliminarily at the start of the fiscal year to make updates to how we think our revenues are going to grow next year. So, so that's what these numbers are based off of. Again, point in time estimates really based off of data we were seeing in September, October. So as we move through the budget process over the next couple of months and into the winter, you're going to see these numbers continue to be refined. So what I'd like to do is to start off by breaking down the revenue projection and talk to you about how revenues are projected to change between fiscal twenty-four and twenty-five, and then we'll do the same thing for expenditures. So, as I just mentioned, revenue overall in the general fund is projected to grow by about sixty-one point four million dollars. You can see here all of the different components, the ups and the downs of that growth. The bar chart here on this slide is showing you that actually, we are projecting about a hundred and ten million point one in terms of our revenue sources that are growing. But that's actually being offset by about fifty million dollars of various sources that were either one-time for fiscal twenty-four, or revenue streams that are projected to decline in fiscal twenty-five. So let's start by looking at these sources one by one. So our property tax revenue is projected to grow by five percent. You can see that property tax revenue, based off of our fiscal twenty-five forecast, will represent just under fifty percent of the total general fund revenue. So that five percent growth represents about just over, just under fifty-four million dollars. As you know, this number is very much dependent upon the triennial assessment process. So for the fiscal twenty-five budget, it will be Group Three that will be reassessed. And so Group Three represents the southern portion of the city. This is an area where we did see strong, strong growth in value during the real estate boom, when interest rates were very low. So this is the first time those properties are being reassessed post the most real, most recent real estate boom. We are projecting that overall taxable assessments will be up by about five point eight percent. Again, that's going to be primarily driven by that growth that we're seeing in residential properties. But keep in mind, that growth ends up getting phased in because of the homestead tax credit. So we won't see all of that growth in one year. The other thing that is a bit of good news in terms of the property tax is that we do have a batch of pilot agreements that will be expiring at the start of fiscal twenty-five. And so we'll have about eight million dollars worth of new assessable value that'll be on the tax rolls that wasn't previously on the tax rolls due to, due to economic development When we look at income taxes, we're projecting that revenue from this source is going to grow by about three percent, or thirteen point six million dollars. Revenue from income tax makes up twenty percent of the general fund revenue. This projection is really in line with what is being projected at the state level. So at the state level, they are projecting that income tax receipts will be up by about three percent. And so we're following that, that growth assumption. One of the things to note here is that embedded in that assumption is, we are projecting that we will see an overall increase in taxable income. So essentially, earners in the state of Maryland will be reporting higher income tax receipts. But what we're seeing, based off of trends, is that the city's share of statewide collections is actually declining. And so we're seeing, we're projecting that our share of the overall statewide collection will go down from about one point six seven percent to one point five six percent. Again, that's sort of reflective of what we've been seeing in terms of population loss and, and a reduction in the number of individuals, city residents filing income tax. And then next up is highway user revenues. We are, again, this was an earlier projection, we're projecting that highway user revenue would be up by about forty-one point five million dollars, or a growth rate of about twenty-one percent. Now, most, or a bulk of this increase is associated with the change in legislation pertaining to the H U R allocation that was part of the two thousand and twenty-two General Assembly action. So if you'll recall, in two thousand and twenty-two, the, the state took action to phase in a five-year increase for the city's H U R allocation. And that was, in part, trying to restore a cut to highway user revenue that the, the state had put in place coming out of the Great Recession. So, under that formula that passed in two thousand and twenty-two, the city's share of the H U R formula, or the overall H U R amount, was supposed to go up from nine and a half percent to eleven percent. Now, one of the things that we know after this forecast was finalized is that we can anticipate that the state budget will include action to walk back a portion of this increase. And it's our understanding that that proposal will hold the, will hold the allocation at the current amounts. And so this is a number that, that may come down, and that would ultimately impact funding that's available for Department of Transportation capital investment. Now, shifting gears to revenue streams that are declining, the first one up is interest earnings. We're projecting that those will come down about twenty-seven percent, or a decline of seven million dollars from the fiscal twenty-four budget. Interest earnings represent just under a percent of all of the revenue in the city's general fund, but this is one where we've seen a lot of volatility in recent years. So while interest rates were at near zero, the, the revenue that the city was receipt, was realizing in this area also went down to zero. But as interest rates have gone up, we've seen a lot more revenue come in from this source. You heard me talk about that last week when I was briefing you all on the first quarter. What is happening in our projection here is that we are assuming that we will have less cash on hand in fiscal twenty-five, and that will be driven primarily by the spend down of ARPA. So right now, we have a lot of cash in the city's coffer, because when we receive, we have the full ARPA award on hand minus what we've spent. So as we, we anticipate that, especially going into fiscal twenty-five, knowing the, the spend down requirements for ARPA, that we're going to start to see that cash on hand number come down quite a bit. And so that's really what is sort of the big driver between the, behind the decline and what we're projecting here. We are assuming that interest rates will continue to be favorable in terms of what the city is able to, to receive in terms of our, our short-term returns. But again, we know that that is something that's changing. We're closely monitoring what the Fed is saying about that, because we, you know, we've heard even as, we know, as recently, even as this week, that we, in fiscal twenty-five, we could start to see a reversal where interest rates might start to come down. The next item up is state school funding. So in fiscal twenty-four, the city received ten million dollars from the state to help offset the increase for our local share for education. This, that was a one-time payment that was intended to help sort of bridge the, the increase that we saw last year. So we're not assuming that we'll receive any additional state relief outside of the, the standard school formula for schools. So that's just backing out that one-time payment that we received. Also, in line with that, as part of last year's budget balancing actions, we used about just under twenty-five million dollars from prior year fund balance in order to balance the budget. So we are not assuming that we would utilize any fund balance as part of our overall strategy to balance the fiscal twenty-five budget. So we've removed, we've removed that funding source from our projections.
What's the total amount that we currently have on hand from a fund balance perspective?
So we're still finishing the fiscal twenty-three audit. And so the, the final number that's available will be contingent upon all of the fiscal twenty-three actions. What I can say is, based off of all the closeout actions that we did, based off of our preliminary numbers, I'm not anticipating that the fund balance number will grow between what we had in fiscal twenty-two and fiscal twenty-three.
Basically, level off or slightly below. What's the timeline on the, the closing out of twenty-three?
I'll refer that question to the CFO.
Please, Mr. CFO, if you could turn the mic on.
Thank you so, thank you so much, of course. Sorry, the question was the timeline on-
The timeline to close out the books for twenty-three.
We, right now, are anticipating finalizing everything in, in January. I will work with my team and I can get you a written answer on the exact date.
Is that, is that standard? Like that long, it seems long.
It's a little bit delayed. Standard would be the end of December. We are, we're finalizing some last pieces right now. It was a little bit delayed this year because of staffing challenges we had had earlier in the year, but we're caught up now. And so we should be done maybe about a month or so later than typical.
So, so typical is like two, two quarters behind?
Yeah, that's right.
That's fair to say, okay, thank you. Mr. Chair?
Thank you, Mr. President. Where were we at on fund, or the last time we had a hard figure for fund balance? Where were we at?
At the end of fiscal twenty-two, the, the available fund balance number was, was between a hundred and a hundred and thirty million dollars.
And do we know how the assignments of those dollars are broken down? Like what's it currently assigned to?
So that would represent sort of what is available as, as, to be, you know, that's unassigned for different purposes. We did assign essentially twenty-five million dollars as part of the fiscal twenty-four budget by virtue of, of budgeting this fund balance.
But is, are any of those other dollars assigned to any other potential expenditures down the road? Like, for example, in the past, we had money that was assigned for F and P pension protection?
Yeah, and so those would be, be separate from what I'm, I'm representing here in that, in my estimate.
I'm sorry, maybe I'm not asking the question the right way. There was a hundred to a hundred and twenty million dollars in fund balance previously?
In what was the available fund balance that could be assigned for specific purposes, such as appropriating it in the budget?
Sure. So of that, twenty-five plus or minus is being used for closeout?
Mm-hmm.
What about the, was the, any portion of the remainder of that assigned to any categories?
No.
So it's just-
It's available.
Fungible, available.
Yes, yes.
Thank you.
And then finally, for all of our other revenue sources not broken out here, those items collectively are projected to decline by just about point six percent, or, or two point two million dollars. This would include revenue that, that we receive from the hospitality industry, including our hotel tax, our admissions and amusement tax. You know, we're continuing to see strong room night booking and coupled with the higher rates, the average rates for a hotel room, which is having a positive income, or a positive impact on our hotel tax receipts. So those revenues collectively are projected to grow by about one point two million dollars next year. We are sort of seeing a level off in the, in the real estate market. So, you know, we're still seeing real estate transactions happen, but we're seeing less action in terms of refinancing and things like that. And so in terms of transfer and recordation taxes, we're projecting that those will come down by about one point four million dollars. And that's pretty consistent with what we are seeing through the first quarter of fiscal twenty-four. We are assuming that the cost of implementing our various tax credits will increase by two point six million dollars. Again, that's based off of our preliminary estimates of the projects that were in the pipeline. That number will continue to be refined as we move through the planning process and get more information about various projects. But in general, any other revenue source not discussed here is, is remaining relatively flat compared to fiscal twenty-four. Again, those numbers will continue to be refined as we have more information as we go through this year. So switching gears and talking about expenditures, expenditures are projected to grow, as I mentioned, by about a hun, just over a hundred and seventy million dollars. And you can see what that looks like broken out by the various categories. So first up is salary, salaries and wages. And so this, these costs are projected to grow by about seven point two percent, or fifty-three million dollars. These costs represent just under thirty-five percent of the city's general fund. The growth here is reflective of either negotiated or anticipated contractual agreements with the unions that cover city employees. And it takes into account the, the contractual rates, any sort of variance between the, the finalized rates in fiscal twenty-four and, and what was assumed in the budget, plus what's planned for fiscal twenty-five. The other thing that's happening here is, as you recall, when we were balancing the fiscal twenty-four budget, we built in savings to various agencies to realize savings from vacant positions. That was intended to be a temporary action for fiscal twenty-four, and so we've restored about fifteen million dollars worth of assumed savings that was allocated across to agency budgets in, in fiscal twenty-four. And then we've also made adjustments to various add-to-base pays that city employees receive based off of the, the various contracts that we have in place. So this would be things like out-of-title pay, hazard pay, those sorts of things, primarily in our, in our public safety agencies.
Madam Director, are the, the new negotiated contracts with the unions, are they factored in this or no?
They are. So, I, we have negotiated contracts with Cub and MAPS that have been approved through BOE for fiscal twenty-four and twenty-five. And so we've budgeted those costs. We're, we are using the anticipated contract for AFSMI, again, for fiscal twenty-four and twenty-five. And then we have assumed increases for police and fire, because we'll be negotiating with them in the winter and spring, going for their, they will have new contracts that will go into effect in twenty-five.
Got you. And all of the, like, campaign or initiatives, I think the one from DPW, they're factored in here as well.
That's correct, that's correct.
I guess the only thing that's not factored in here would be the wage compression study that HR is currently doing, that wouldn't be here.
That's correct. We did not, yep, these numbers do not include implementation of the wage study.
Got you, thank you.
On the benefit side, we're projecting that these costs will be up by about seven point six percent, or twenty-eight point three million dollars. These costs represent just under seventeen percent of the total general fund budget. This is really driven by what we're seeing in terms of health insurance and prescription drug and pension costs. So on the health insurance side, we're projecting that those rates will be up by about ten percent next year. That's consistent with the rate of growth that we saw in our health insurance rates from twenty-three to twenty-four as well. On the pension side, we're projecting that the overall pension costs will be up by about seventeen million dollars in the city's general fund. That's driven by a five percent increase for our civilian pension system and about a six percent increase for our police and fire pension system. The, the rates in, in fiscal twenty-four were relatively flat because of how changes in those systems get smoothed in over, over multiple years. But we are, there were some modest losses in those systems that, that will start to get smoothed in, that's driving the increase from, from twenty-four to twenty-five.
And Director, thank you for obliging the, the council. I just think that the Q and A, while you go through your presentation, it's kind of more efficient for everybody versus, hey, can you jump back to page seven?
Yeah.
Look at this bullet while you're talking, it's all in it.
Definitely.
But we do have one question, and, and council members, if you could kind of take that approach. We do have a question from Councilman Torres.
Thank you, Mr. President. Does this factor in the shift that we did for retirees to Medicare Part D and the other portions of it? So I just want to make sure, because we did assume a lot of cost savings from moving over to that.
Yes, and so those cost savings, we began to realize previously before fiscal twenty-five, and so we're continuing to see the, the positive financial impacts of that change in policy in these numbers.
And then, just knowing that because the majority of the person, a majority of our workforce is eligible for retirement, are we doing any incentives to defer retirement for some people, knowing that that cost will probably increase as well?
I am not aware of any program where we're incentivizing, you know, employees who are retirement-eligible to, to stay with the city. I know that there are, you know, we, we've, we've certainly, I think we're seeing the impact of retirement sort of differently in different city agencies, where we've, we've seen the impact of that. But from a cost perspective on, on the benefit side, there's, there's no program to, to incentivize folks to stay out longer.
Okay, thank you.
That's a great question.
Yeah, Bob just wants to add on one thing there.
One thing, there is a, the F and P pension system has something called drop that you might have heard of. So I don't know if that's what you're referring to, but that, that's baked into our, our calculations, though, for what we contribute to the pension system. So there is, people can defer their retirement and they get like a guaranteed additional, an additional amount that gets, goes into their pension check originally. So I don't know if that's what you're referring to, but that's the, that's the only one I would know of, but there's nothing else in the operating budget specifically for something like that.
Thank you. Great question, Councilman Torres.
Next up is debt and capital. So these costs are projected to grow by just under twenty-one percent, or thirty-four point three million. So the, the biggest driver of this is what we call the PEGO capital program, so that pay as you go. So this is the cash we send from the general fund to the capital budget in order to supplement the borrowing sources that are in the capital budget. So we're projecting that PEGO capital would be up by about eighty-four million dollars, or would be eighty-four million dollars next year, up by about thirty-seven point eight million. The bulk of that increase is from H, what we're assuming for highway user revenue in terms of that higher allocation that would go to those DOT projects. On the general fund side, we are assuming that will contribute fifteen million dollars, which is consistent with what was contributed in fiscal twenty-four. Again, this is a risk area that we'll have to closely monitor in terms of how things shake out in the state budget to understand sort of what that final H U R number is going to look like. Do want to note that debt services, general fund debt service is projected to decline slightly by three million dollars. Again, that is, is partially delayed to when we issue, when the fiscal twenty-three geobonds are being issued. But do just want to note that, you know, in the long term, the city's goal would be to build up additional funding for debt service so that we can have additional borrowing resources available over on the capital side in order to address some of our deferred maintenance needs.
Quick question. What's the difference between, I guess, the highway user revenue from an expenditure perspective and the highway user fund as relates to what we brought in, like forty million or something like that?
Yeah, so the, the, what we're projecting on the PEGO side is that the highway user revenue will be up by about thirty-eight million dollars. A couple of minutes ago, I was talking to you on the revenue side about highway user revenue being up by about forty-one.
Yeah.
So we do have a handful of services within the operating budget that are funded by highway user revenue. And so what we assume is that we would cover the, the incremental increase in those operating services with additional H U R, and then that, the balance of what's available would be, would go to capital. And so the, the difference between the forty-one million on the revenue side and the thirty-eight million is essentially the inflationary cost increases of providing the H U R operating services that are primarily in the Department of Transportation.
Got it, okay. I was doing a comparison with the forty-one to the sixty-nine million.
So sixty-nine is what is available, it's not the, it's not the incremental increase.
Got you. The real comparison is the forty-one and thirty-seven point eight.
In terms of schools' costs, we are projecting that the local share will be up by about four percent, or fifteen million dollars. Based off of these estimates, city funding for schools would be about seventeen percent of our general fund budget. This projection assumes that what we would call the core components of the state education formula would grow at about four to five percent, which is consistent with what those initial projections and cost estimates for the Kerwin legislation had projected. This assumes that we will remain in the same tier under that program that you've previously heard us talk about, that Education Effort Index. And the Education Effort Index is what- And the Education Effort Index is what resulted in the higher-than-anticipated increase in the fiscal '24 budget. So here, we're assuming that we'll stay in the same tier. I will note that if we were to drop another tier under that calculation, this number would go up. It will not go up by as much as it did last year, because last year we fell from 100% to 35%. So we, we don't have as, as far to, to drop if there were a potential change here. One of the things to note is that we will receive the final school funding formula and the estimate that we should use for the budget. We'll receive that in late January, and then that number gets refined a couple, one or two more times as we move through the spring.
Madam Director, real quick, I guess on the previous slide, I got stuck again. the amount from a PEGO perspective is basically double, but I guess we still talk about same level of service? I forget the term that you guys use. How does that, how does that, those two things go together?
Yeah, so what we, how we look at the, the HUR number is, and I'm just going to flip back to the, the revenue number, because maybe it's easier to look at that way. So in fiscal '24, we've received, the budget assumed that we'd receive about $193.4 million in HUR. Next year, we're assuming that we'll receive about $234.9 million in, in highway user revenue. What we've done in these initial forecasts is we said, okay, we're going to continue all of the services that currently receive HUR, we're going to assume that we are going to continue to provide those at their current level of service. Those services cost a little bit more in fiscal '25 than they do in '24, primarily driven by staff costs, and to some degree, what we're seeing in, in some of the contractual cost pressures in the operating budget, too. So what we did was we took that batch of services and it, and we said, okay, here's the, here's the, here's the fiscal '25 current level of service cost estimate for those services. And then based off of that, there was a balance of about $38 million. And we're saying that additional $38 million would be available to go to capital to enhance the DOT capital program.
And, and that's, in theory, the definition of level of service?
Yes, yes. And that would, that's just sort of the starting assumption. Obviously, there's a lot of policy choices in there about if that's how we want to, how the, you know, how policymakers want to allocate those dollars.
Now, why would we see that as an increase in services? Because now we're able to pull in additional capital projects?
So I think that the, I think from an operating budget perspective, you know, we're not enhancing at this point with these estimates, we're not, we're not showing what it would look like if we put additional HUR to any operating expenses. So that's why we're calling it current level of service. Now, of course, you're right, by having, you know, $38 million of, of additional capital funding, you're going to see an enhancement in terms of the number of, of capital projects that can get funded over on, on that side of the shop.
Understood. Just trying to paint the story as pretty as possible.
Yep, yep.
Thank you.
So, so moving on from, from schools, next up is energy costs. So these are projected to grow by about 15% or $2.9 million. These costs represent a small share of our budget, just under a percent. Do want to just sort of call out, what we're seeing in terms of increases is more so on the natural gas and the chilled water side of the house. We're actually seeing that our electricity costs are going to come down by about 5%. And that's driven by a cooperative purchasing agreement that was, that DGES manages for our energy costs.
Sorry, Councilwoman Cohen?
Hey, Mr. President. Question on, sorry to jump a little bit, but question on revenue. I know the other night, the mayor spoke about potentially transferring some of the sales tax from the state to the city. Obviously, that would require the state to take action there, but I am curious if you all have run those projections and thought about the fiscal implications if that could happen.
So we've, we, these numbers for fiscal '25 do not take into account what, what a local sales tax would look like. Our team, and I would say the CFO more directly, has been involved in forecasting different scenarios associated with what a local sales tax would look like.
Thank you so much, Director. And I'll just add to that, that of course, in the future, the impact has the potential of being huge. We are very actively exploring what could potentially be done if the city used some of the, some of the tools that other large cities around the country have had the, the opportunity to use. Baltimore City is one of the very few big cities in the United States that does not receive a share of the sales tax that's collected within our borders. So a lot of conversations about the future, but as the Director said, that would be, well, past fiscal '25.
Thank you. Thank you, Madam Director.
Next up is contractual. So these costs are projected to grow by about 7.6% or $24.2 million. Contractual spending represents a, a sort of a big umbrella of various expenditures in the city's general fund. Everything from lease payments that we make to what you would traditionally think of as a, like a consulting contract, but also essentially anything we're, we're buying through by virtue of a contract. What we have assumed here is that, in general, these costs are growing by 4% based off of an overall inflationary assumption. We did make some, some higher adjustments to legal fees. Those are, those are up by about $2.1 million based off of actual spending that we've seen over the last couple of years. We've also increased our forecast for tipping fees, and this is what gets paid out by DPW when they, they take stuff, take things to the landfill. And then our, our rental costs for, for various leases for city space, those are projected to be up by about 1.5 million.
Thank you. With regards to the tipping fees, how does the new compost facility factor into that increase, and how is that being modeled over time?
So this would not take into account implementation of a composting program. I think this is something that we would see come down once the new composting facility were to come online and we see sort of broader implementation of composting. What I can say is, I, I know that DPW is actively in design for that project, and I'm working with them on their team to understand the operating model behind that facility and how we would start to bring those costs into, into how we project the general fund.
And correct me if I'm wrong, the tipping fees only include those items that are going to the landfills, is that correct?
Yes.
So how are we factoring in, like, increased recycling or increased kind of waste diversion for, for this, for this fee?
Yeah, so we are continuing to work with DPW to understand, you know, how, how weekly recycling could potentially reduce this number, and, and sort of what other, you know, what other factors are in play to potentially bring this number down. I will say, this is something that had been growing pre, you know, pre-COVID as well, and this has just kind of been a continuing trend that we've seen on the expenditure side, you know, over the last four to five years.
And then the last question, why is it such a big increase? I mean, rental, rental of real property is only at 8%. This is looking at 37% to 40%. Why the, why the such big increase?
Again, we, we adjusted the budget amount based off of what we had seen in recent years. And so, again, that would, you know, that was just driven upon, you know, bringing that closer in line with actual spending. And so I guess that's why you're seeing a larger percentage increase than what we're seeing for some of these other items in this umbrella.
Thank you. And so from a planned versus budgeted versus actuals perspective, that kind of signals to me that our budgets and our planned award were
Yep.
extremely off. And so how are we correcting that on the back end as we kind of go into the next fiscal years?
So again, that's where we're really working with DPW to try to align this number with their operations and what they have planned for fiscal '25, to try to figure out, you know, what's really driving that number? And then what levers do we have operationally to try to bring it down in order to achieve some of the goals you were mentioning in terms of waste diversion, recycle, increased recycling, et cetera?
And then last question, does this include the supplemental awards that are going to DPW in the future? So for example, if we're doing planned budgets and actuals, that supplemental, does that include, is that included within the budget versus actuals amount?
So I think how I understand your question, the, the council recently approved a supplemental budget action to resolve a deficit for DPW from fiscal '23. So that was a one-time increase that we did for fiscal '23. The fiscal 20, so that was, that's not baked into the budget.
No, and so I come, I understand that, but I, I think it's more from a modeling perspective.
Yep.
We know that particular agencies have increased supplementals tracking
Yes.
per year. How are we looking at that from a planned award versus budgets and actuals so that that necessarily increase we're not seeing of a 30% to 40% to 50% increase?
That's correct. And what we're trying to do is really figure out how we bring the budget in line with, in this case, contracts that drive those costs, to make sure that what we're planning for in the budget is realistic with, with what's planned to be spend, spent. Again, these are our initial forecasts to say, here's what it would cost to provide the current level of service. What we're doing now is agencies are working on their requests, and as we go into the decision-making process, is trying to figure out what options do we have to drive down these costs where we can, especially in areas like this where maybe we can save some money and not have to cut into service delivery.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Mr. Chair?
Thank you, Mr. President. The expansion of the Quarantine Road landfill, can you talk about how much we have set aside for that and what we project the total cost to be and when we expect it to hit capacity?
Do you have those numbers off the top of your head?
There's a, I can look up the numbers, we can follow those, but there is a, something called a landfill trust fund in our financial statements where we've made contributions to be able to do the development. So I don't have them in front of me, but we can follow up with the, the amounts that have been dedicated to that.
And Councilman, I can say that in our '25 numbers, we have an additional year of a contribution assumed in there. I just don't have that number right off the top of my head, but to Bob's point, we can include that in our follow-up.
Yeah, we've been making a significant, like, near-eight-figure contribution every year since, like, '19 or '20, right? Fiscal '19 or '20?
Yes, there has been a contribution in DPW's budget going back many years. And we had, there was a point where we had stepped it up because we knew we were approaching, you know, we were getting close to the end of the useful life of the facility, so we had made an adjustment, I just don't remember which fiscal year it was, to start setting aside more money so that we would have the proceeds to do, you know, the development when that time came due. So we can, we can get the specific numbers for you, what the balance is and what's in there.
Thank you. So what the balance of the trust fund is, what the total projected cost of the expansion is?
Right.
And when we're set to hit full capacity?
Yep, yep, we can find that up.
Thank you.
And I know that design is underway on that capital project as well, so.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Madam Director?
Next up is fleet. So we are projecting that these costs will grow by about 4% or $2.7 million. Our fleet costs represent, you know, under 4% of the total general fund budget. The fleet rate is comprised of three components. The maintenance costs, and that's what gets, that's the cost of DGES to work on equipment, you know, whether that's doing preventative maintenance or, you know, major repairs. It also includes the fuel costs associated with the vehicles and then the, the cost associated with the master lease, and that's the, you know, that's the borrowing instrument that we use to buy fleet assets every year. So if you'll recall, we, we did a pretty significant increase in fiscal '24, bumping up what we had available for master lease purchases to $35 million. In our estimates for fiscal '25, we are growing that $35 million for, by 4% with the intention of, of hoping that that keeps pace with inflationary costs for this, for city equipment.
That's actually probably encouraging. You know, the increase in gas costs and other material costs associated with maintenance, seems like 4% is a pretty solid number.
Yeah, and I, I think we made a lot of progress by bumping up the number to $35 million last year to sort of really take into account the big increases in equipment that we saw from the, you know, the COVID inflationary impact. So I think that this is a better baseline to work from. I can also say that, you know, my team and I are working really closely with Director Attila and his team to really refine that $35 million and, and make sure that that really is, you know, a, a good reflection of retiring, what we want to do is we want to retire fleet assets within their useful life so that we're not dumping a lot of money into things that are really old.
Understood.
And then finally, we have this all-other category. These costs are going up by about 6.4% or $7.2 million. Again, the primary driver here is our, our standard 4% inflationary increase. You know, this includes everything from our workers' compensation charges to agencies to things for like our computer software. I do want to note that what we're calling the support for individuals and organizations, those costs are up by about 5.7%. That's funding that goes to different grantees that receive funding through the city's budget based off of different contractual relationships. The bulk of that increase is for Visit Baltimore, and Visit Baltimore's increase is driven by a formula that states out what they receive under the city's hotel tax.
Mr. Chair?
Just a question, the COVID money, is that broken down, how, what agencies it really affecting throughout the city? Am I asking the right question? I know the COVID money is now gone, so.
So when you say COVID money, are you talking about?
Where was it? I'm, I'm sorry, where, where did you use the money at in terms of agencies? And what agencies is it going to affect now that the COVID money is actually gone?
So when you say COVID money, Councilman, are you referencing the FEMA, the costs that we were seeking FEMA reimbursement for?
Yes.
Okay. So we were receiving FEMA reimbursement for our costs associated with the COVID-19 response up to May of, of 2023. So post-May, we, you know, we've not been receiving, we're not eligible to continue to receive any reimbursement. So that coincided with the end of the emergency declaration at the federal level. The bulk of the costs that we were still incurring up until May were in the Health Department and the Mayor's Office of Homeless Services. So those, to your point, those costs were unbudgeted throughout the COVID-19 response, and we were tracking those costs and receiving reimbursement from FEMA. We're continuing to work through the closeout process to get our, our full reimbursable amount. What the Health Department and the Mayor's Office of Homeless Services have done with those programs that have continued post-FEMA reimbursement is they've moved those programs to other funding sources in order to continue them. In the case of both of those agencies, they, ARPA is a component of what they're doing in terms of how they're sustaining those programs. But again, we'll, you know, as, as ARPA comes to a close, we'll have to look about, we'll have to look at how we would sustain costs for those programs going forward if we wanted to continue them.
Thank you.
Madam Director? Oh, yeah, of course.
Yeah, switching topics, the acquisition of, the potential acquisition of two hotels to service individuals experiencing homelessness, we had set aside $90 million for that, I believe, in ARPA funding?
I believe that is in the ballpark of, of what was allocated for that.
Do, do we know what the status of that is?
I know that the, there are ongoing negotiations that are happening between the city and, and a number of properties to identify the potential locations that could be purchased with those dollars. Those efforts are being led by Those efforts are being led by the Mayor's Office of Homeless Services, the Mayor's Office of Recovery Programming, and then supported by the, the Office of Real Estate within the Comptroller's Office.
Thank you. Madam Director?
So sort of wrapping up what all of these data points tell us about fiscal 25. You know, on the, the revenue side, I would say in general, especially when we look at sort of our, those big components of the general fund revenue in terms of property tax and income tax, you know, we're continuing to see growth in those numbers. And the other thing that I think is an important takeaway, especially on the, the property tax side, is that we are seeing that our residential properties are continuing to hold their value, especially sort of post, post that real estate boom, which I think is, is a good sign for us moving forward. What we, what we need to focus on, on the expenditure side, is that we, we know the pressures from inflation are, are starting to wane a little bit, but as we, you know, play the catch-up game on things like wages and, and other pieces of, in other various expenditures, we have to look for ways that we can bring that rate of expenditure growth down, slow that down a little bit so that it's something that can be realistically sustained by, by revenue sources. And then I think as we look to fiscal 25, we have to figure out how we would balance the use of one-time actions as part of that strategy to really make sure that we are balancing the budget in a sustainably structural way year over year. So, oh, go ahead.
Mr. Chair?
We're completely closed down on F and P pension, right? Like, we no longer have any liabilities on that?
That's correct. That was all paid out.
What was the total?
Thirty, I think it was 35 million.
And we had, or the actuary originally had said like 67 and a half?
Yeah, they'd started at 60, and then as we got closer to-
So we broke, it was halfway split, just about?
Yeah, the number ended up coming down. The original projections, I mean, that 60 number was probably almost a decade old, frankly. And then as, as the case kind of proceeded through the courts and we kind of had a better idea of like where we were vulnerable, you know, we fine-tuned the estimates to what the origin, the final judgment was. So it ended up being about 35 million.
And so that money's been transferred from fund balance to the appropriate home to satisfy everyone?
That's right. And actually, it's, it's, it's been paid out to retirees, F and P members, so it's, it's gone now.
Lastly, just to confirm, there's no other liabilities associated with that saga, if you will?
For, for that case, no. For other legal liabilities, there's always dozens of things.
But that's closed out, it's been appealed over and over, and, and it's finally resolved. And let me ask the question a different way. All parties are satisfied and have dropped legal action, correct?
Yes, on the legal action, I think on that, yes.
Thanks.
Director, just thought of something around staffing when he was asking a question about F and P. The staffing number that you showed us earlier, does that factor in, like, say, like all the vacancies that, vacant positions that the council took issue with last year? That doesn't factor right sizing or the reduction of the positions maybe moving forward?
That's correct. What we did was we took out those one-time savings that we had built into the, the 24 budget. The mayor has issued budget guidance to agencies that would, where, you know, he's seeking proposals that would potentially look at how we would right-size staffing levels, especially in areas where we have high vacancies.
Thank you.
One other number that I just wanted to, to clarify regarding the ARPA allocation for hotels, the actual allocation that was available for hotels was 40 million. Not the, the full 90.
I thought it was like 89 million or something, or 79. I'm only going off memory.
And so we can, we can confirm that, we, it might be, we can confirm the exact-
You know what, maybe it was the total amount for Mayor's Office of Homeless Services was more like 79 or 89.
Yes, that's what, that's what I was wondering is happening. I, I think the set aside just for the hotel piece, for the hotel acquisition piece was just 40.
I think, I think the confusion is, it's been zeroed out, though. I don't think they spent any of the, for the hotels or for whatever else it was.
They're still working on, on the acquisition, that's correct.
Yeah, the newspaper said 90 this morning. I could have swore it was either 89 or 79. But that, so that included the ARPA allocation for that action as well as the ARPA allocation to MOHS for other operational-
And what I'll take as a follow-up is I'll, I'll get with my colleagues in the Mayor's Office of Recovery Programming and clarify what was allocated for the Mayor's Office of Homeless Services.
Got it. Thank you.
Yep. So just to put these numbers in, in context of, of what they look like over the, the 10-year horizon. So if, if these trends were to continue, you know, out to fiscal 24 or fiscal 34, you know, that, that deficit would ultimately end up growing to just under $2 billion in that 10-year horizon.
That's a scary picture.
And we would work ourselves up to about a, a $175 million starting shortfall every year. So when we talk about, you know, structural balance and, and what we want to get to, as I was mentioning at the beginning, we want to find a way to bring our revenue and expenditure lines closer to each other when we look at this 10-year horizon. Because again, that just creates more certainty in terms of the service levels that we're able to provide and, and making sure that we're sustainably able to, to continue various commitments in the city's operating budget.
So what are we doing to slow expenditure growth?
So as part of the fiscal 20, 25 budget, you know, we're exploring a variety of initiatives that would, you know, I think, change these numbers both on the revenue and the expenditure side. Beyond fiscal 25, and we know this from the previous 10-year plan, that we can look at a, a number of initiatives that maybe get, that, that maybe take place over multiple years that can have significant savings. You know, when we look at the 10-year plan from fiscal 13 to fiscal 2023, the initiatives that were implemented as part of that plan saved the city about $190 million a year. So, so we've done it in the, in the prior 10-year window. And so I would say, coupled through the approach to the fiscal 25 budget in terms of what agencies have been asked to prepare, plus work that's happening around the 10-year plan update, that's how we're looking to bring these numbers into alignment.
Yes, Councilman Torrance?
So we have, have we asked agencies to look at revenue generating opportunities? Case in point, like wrecking parks for a number of our new wreck centers. Can we offer a membership for early hours between nine, 6:00 AM and 9:00 AM? That way, we can pay for the staffing levels and provide a new level of service, but it will offset some of the costs that we have, right? Or I'm just thinking like, we have to be creative with what we're building as well in terms of our new facilities, but also looking at creative ways in which we have not tapped into new revenue sources that are active.
Definitely. And I think, you know, we're, we're working very closely with agencies, not only to understand how they can control and contain expenditures, but, you know, where we, to your point, where we have untapped revenue potential as well.
I just, this is not a question for you. I know it's coming up, thinking of board of estimates, but I think that we have to also, as we continue to pass this and work with the administration, find other entrepreneurial ways, kind of to piggyback on Councilman Torrance's question. I know with, like, the 83 camera situation. You know, minimal amount of overhead, right? And not to say that it's going to forever change, but I'm pretty sure, Bob, you remember going back and forth with the numbers and asking about it. But that's just an easy thing that DOT already has the skillset to do. You know, why get into an additional long-term contract with the outer-city vendor when we could do that work? That's not going to be $100 million. But, you know, every time we just chip away at that, so. Again, it's not a question for you, just something to kind of speak for the record. I believe it's an item that's coming up in front of the board of estimates, maybe next week if I, if I read that right. And we'll look to kind of talk to the administration, but I think like, again, every type of incremental opportunity we have to grow revenue and be entrepreneurial with it, that we should be doing it, so.
Definitely.
You, you can't say definitely.
Chairman Costello? That's me, that's me. Additional funding for code enforcement and parking enforcement officers. Bob, I've been requesting this for seven or eight years now. What can we do in the upcoming fiscal 25 budget as these positions generate more revenue than they cost to put out on the street?
I can talk about code enforcement.
Or Laura, I just addressed it to Bob because Bob's the one I usually complain to.
I'll talk about code enforcement, Bob will talk about parking. So in the fiscal 24 budget, BBMR and the Housing Commissioner's Office worked together really closely to look at the funding that was available for code enforcement officers, especially as it relates to how we were assuming savings from vacant positions. And we came to a place that essentially freed up funding for them to put more of their, get more of their vacant positions filled in order to, to build out their staffing levels. And I know that's been a focus of the commissioner and something that she has been working on, both from the perspective of how do they get more positions filled? How do they look at compensation for code enforcement officers? So that we can build out a staff, a staffing model that achieves what you're describing there. So I think we'll see some of that progress in fiscal 24, and we can use that to help guide how we would potentially continue to scale. And I know separately, Bob has been closer to some of the work that's been happening on the parking enforcement side.
Yeah, so on, on the parking enforcement side, we definitely have heard the feedback over the years. And, you know, my thought on this is we, we have to find the most efficient way to deliver parking enforcement in, in the way that generates the most revenue for the city. I mean, it's something that could generate more revenue and improve service in some cases. I know there was a period of time where they did have trouble filling even the existing positions they had. So there was a thought that like, we've got to fill or get closer to filling what we have to go, to, to get better. We have pulled the Parking Authority together with DOT because you know now today, DOT is the one that controls the staff. Parking Authority has, I think, a little bit more knowledge, to be fair, about where kind of the holes are or the outages are in some cases in enforcement. So we've actually convened both parties, we actually had a meeting, it was just two weeks ago. Kind of trying to, trying to basically come together and figure out, okay, DOT with their staff, where are folks assigned and at what times? And trying to get some insight from the Parking Authority of where we think there are holes in enforcement, either time of day or times later in the evening where we would be best served to either add an enforcement officer or pay somebody overtime even in some cases to do enforcement. So we've taken the lead on trying to pull the parties together. I mean, to, to be fair, I, I don't want to overstate this, but there is a little bit of a, I don't want to call it, I don't want to call it like a turf war, but like DOT really wants to keep the function. Parking Authority has suggested that there are things that they, they think they can do better, give insight to. And so we've taken the approach of like, let's all sit down together on this. Don't worry about who runs it, but let's all sit down and, and figure out where the, you know, where the holes are in enforcement, where are there areas we can do better? If it's of interest to you, I can share, Parking Authority, to their credit, has a list of every single residential area of what they think the residential permit areas and all the meter spaces, both downtown and in the periphery and other places. And like a list of where they think an enforcement officer could, how much enforcement they think those parking areas need based on just volume and what times of the day those should be done. And our step was to sit down with DOT and figure out, are they covering those? Do they have the staff to cover those? And are there holes there where we can add or do more for that? So I can tell you, we're trying to take the lead and just trying to figure out how to pull those parties together and make sure that we're getting the best bang for the buck for those. There was, there is, you know, we have talked about where is that function best suited, frankly? That's a discussion we've had, very frankly, internally. Is it best suited with DOT? Is it best suited with Parking Authority? What we've learned from the history of this is that in DOT, the parking enforcement is combined with the traffic control. And, you know, that was done many years ago, was meant to be an efficiency because at the time, we weren't able to hire enough people to do dedicated parking enforcement and dedicated traffic control. So the idea was, let's combine these in one type of position classification. These are the STOs or TOs, we call them. And they're spending part of their time doing parking enforcement, and they're also doing part of their time doing other DOT tasks, mostly traffic control. So we have considered the idea of potentially breaking them apart again, that maybe there's merit in having like a dedicated round-the-clock team of people that just does parking, uh, parking enforcement. If, again, the needs are so great or if we find holes in the staffing versus those times of where we need the dedicated enforcement. So we have talked about that. I, I can promise to just kind of keep the council up to date on where those conversations are going and what we're going to do. But I can also tell you that in the past couple of years, given the staffing challenges, we didn't want to just add positions that we couldn't fill. We didn't feel like we were even close to being able to fill the positions that are in the budget where we felt it was worth it. That doesn't mean we don't recognize that better parking enforcement can generate more revenue and, you know, provide better service in a lot of cases for certain neighborhoods.
Bob, have we looked at mergers of both agencies?
I'm sorry?
Have we looked at agency mergers? Because at one time, General Services, DOT, DPW was one agency, right? Have we looked at merging Parking Authority and DOT into one agency? Which means that they can leave one facility, go to the other facility. We now have one less lease, we can now merge the staff of, well, we've done it before at the state level. The city has created more agencies, have we thought about merging agencies too? And then the other piece I want to add on to that, which is a separate thing, we have untapped revenue that we have not done in terms of like filming in Baltimore, in terms of movie studios and others. Whereas we look at the city of Atlanta, New York City, in terms of B-roll. We're one of the cheapest cities to actually film in, and we're not capturing a lot of money in terms of like the cost that we do for street closures, police. So I think that we need to revisit that as well.
Can, can I, or before we get to the filming, because I know you, you've led on that issue. Just back to the, can I jump back to the parking enforcement for a second? So I appreciate that you've convened the parties because in late 14 and early 15, I pursued an effort to move the parking enforcement function from DOT over to Parking Authority. And at the time, I was told by the Law Department that that would not be possible because they were sworn enforcement officers and therefore they couldn't report directly to a quasi-governmental entity?
And that is true, yes.
So what you're talking about is having PABC serve in an advisory capacity to help direct more effective parking enforcement?
That, that's correct. In the short term, yes, because I think what we've learned over time is that, again, I think Parking Authority has good insight because they set the meter rates on different blocks, because they have a good sense of where the, you know, their parking garages are and where the demand is. They, and because they also manage the applications for the residential permit parking program, they tend to have, I think, a little bit better insight into where some of the enforcement could go. So yes, we brought them on to help target the enforcement efforts. I wouldn't say we've, you know, completely abandoned the idea of Parking, Parking Authority either doing some or taking over eventually, but there would be a legal change required to, and it would be a state legal change. What I, my understanding is we're the only jurisdiction that there is this restriction, so we would have to go ask for permission to have a quasi-agency to be able to have these law enforcement powers.
And that would require state enabling?
It would be, it would be state, state legislation, that's right.
And back to the staffing issues that exist within the parking enforcement function. We, we have vacancies for, in parking enforcement, they're funded vacancies. But obviously, those funds are not expended on those vacancies. Those funds are used for similar functionality or other things within the Department of Transportation at the end of the year. So I would only make the suggestion for your consideration that if we continue to fund at those levels, there doesn't appear to be an incentive to aggressively pursue filling those vacancies. And therefore, we are leaving revenue on the table. That is, is not just a quote-unquote tax grab, I recognize this is a fee, not a tax, but that is a quality-of-life issue that all 15 council members unequivocally support because all 300 neighborhoods in the city ask ad nauseam for increased parking enforcement. So I'm only suggesting that BBMR think about it differently because if we don't make that investment, there's going to be no incentive for DHR and for an administration to fill those.
I understand absolutely what you're saying there. And one thing that we have discussed is, if we can't fill the positions, the first thing we'll do with an agency is say, would you be willing to have fewer budgeted positions at higher salaries, right? So you can, and that's something we've talked about with DOT and, you know, if the salaries are not adequate to potentially attract folks, would they be willing to abolish permanent positions that we're not filling anyway, right? And put that money towards higher salaries to make a better recruitment effort. So that is something we have considered.
My final point on this subject is, in the last three months, our office has convened meetings with Department of Transportation leadership and the Office of the Labor Commissioner. And there seems to be a hangup in terms of finding the appropriate incentives to offer DOT parking enforcement officers, or rather, the TOs, what they're called. But basically, there's a hangup in being able to offer them the appropriate incentives to take overtime shifts. And there seems to be some concern that amongst the parties in general, that it is too costly to provide that overtime shift capacity when the last estimate I saw is that the average TO at 40 hours a week conducting only parking enforcement generated something like $260,000 a year in revenue and costs something in the neighborhood of $65,000 to $70,000 with salary infringed to put on the street. So I seem to be confused as to when we have a stadium area event in which we have zero tolerance parking and several of the RPP adjacent neighborhoods such as Sharp Witten Hall and Ridgely's Delight, Federal Hill, South Baltimore, Otterbine and Washington Village/Picton as it's known as its formal RPP name, that there is significant opportunity above and beyond that $260,000 in projected revenue just on stadium event days, which account for one quarter of the days in a total calendar year. And I'll defer to you to answer Councilman Torrance's question around the combination of functionality within PABC and DOT. However, it's my understanding that there is a short litany of legal and financial reasons why those two agencies can't be combined, or rather, why Parking Authority exists as a quasi-governmental for bonding purposes and other reasons associated with enterprise utility funds. But I'll defer to Bob.
Let me try to just answer the end here, I think, and then come back to Councilman Torrance. So the idea of spending overtime with some level of additional revenue, I think, is totally reasonable. I was not aware of the conversation you're talking about, so I can reach out to them and just make sure that when we make those decisions that we actually look at the data and say, what is an hourly, you know, wage or an overtime rate that you would pay? And what's a normal amount of tickets? Again, we don't want to be in like a situation where we're trying to create quotas, right, for parking. But if you walk around during those days, you know, we can reasonably say, here are the number of violations that a parking officer can get in an hour of work or two hours of work. So I think if there wasn't that financial analysis, we should be providing that and I can do that. Going back to Councilman Torrance, the Parking Authority is a separate entity. I mean, that was that way even when I started in city government, which goes back almost 20 years. You know, usually those splits are done to kind of focus one entity on certain tasks because DOT has a lot of responsibilities, right? They've got all kinds of things that they're responsible for. So it was meant to kind of, you know, focus Parking Authority on, you know, more of the parking related things. There is, from a, there is from a bonding perspective, when we issue debt for those, for the city-owned garages. I mean, we isolate some of the money even in the budget in what's called the Parking Fund or Parking Enterprise Fund. But I don't think that played into the organizationally why it was split out. But I can check with the Parking Authority and just see if we can get a little bit better understanding of what the reasoning is. But I wouldn't propose that you put them back together. I think sometimes it's better to have one smaller organization focused on a particular issue. I think here, what we just have is we have Parking Authority is responsible for everything for parking, but just this one little element of enforcement happens to be in DOT. Because again, about a decade ago, we chose to say, maybe that's a more efficient use of resources to have DOT do both the parking enforcement and the traffic control in one body, so to speak.
So my question is related to this because when we've had issues like this before in state, there, these people are in bargaining units, right? So if you merge the agencies, you can, you can deal with the bargaining issues, right? Because some quasi-agencies can't have coupled employees, right? If you do move them over. So that's one of the things that's going to come up for contractual reasons. So that's why I'm saying if we're thinking creatively, there's going to be two parts. If we do move bodies, there's going to have to be an issue of collective bargaining that we have to come back to the table for. And then that's a different conversation, the cost that you did not assume. Then if you merge the agencies, there's some conversations about what does leadership look like? How is it in terms of the bargaining, it will stay in place? So I'm just thinking it from two different little lanes of it. I think that we should look at some instances where there's duplication of services across many of our agencies and that we may have to eliminate some functions. Like this is why I started the conversation with DOT and DPW because at one time, just one project, I had a $2 million overrun because of just resurfacing. But when we look at the cost internally doing it ourselves with the capacity to do it, we're looking around $250,000 for the same amount of streets to do the same work, right? But we have to train our staff to get there. So I'm thinking that we have to be creative in terms of, those are contracts that long-term that we can save on? If we think about how we build that capacity within the agency now? Or if there's functions that are cross-agencies that we know that just can't be coordinated, put it under one agency? Like I still, and I'm still hanging my hat on this, is I still hate that the Special Investigations Unit is in housing when it should be in DPW, when we once had environmental police officers doing the same actual law enforcement, right? That's two things that cause us to have a lot of delays in terms of actual service delivery. Because I often have to send an email to DPW after I send it to the housing like, hey, I need you to clear this thing. You should be on this, right? I shouldn't have to do that level of coordination or have to look at the service level between you guys doing clean stat and then there's a 17-day lag between when it's put in the back, when it's put in the alley versus when it's cleaned and once someone checks it, right? So in, to just be transparent, some instances with the investigation, it's a waste of cost and staff time when we can just clean it up right away. So I think that as we're looking at the deficit, we need to think about people's, people and functions. How do we merge them without cutting people's salaries or cutting people out of the budget? How do we make efficiency so that we can give a higher level of service delivery?
Certainly, and I think, you know, those efforts are part of what, you know, how we'll evaluate different proposals as part of the fiscal 25 budget. But also, one of the, one of the cornerstones of the 10-year plan update is maximizing service delivery and so working with all these different operational agencies in order to identify, you know, the types of efficiencies that you're describing. The other thing I wanted to come back to was your comment on some fees, like, you know, what we charge for movies and a variety of other fees. That's one of the things that our team, that my team is looking at as well as part of fiscal 25 is, you know, going through our inventory of fees, also looking to identify things where there are not fees so that we can put together a package to really identify where we have opportunities where maybe things haven't been updated for a long time and really ensuring that where appropriate, those fees are set at a proper level to help resolve some of these issues.
I have one more thing on the parking.
No, we, the problem is we're already out of order because you kind of jumped in line of Councilman Torrance.
Yeah, and I hear.
Could you just wrap that up?
Yeah, I wrap it up.
Chairman Stokes is next.
Yeah, I hear you Director, because when I think about the fact that Fox filmed in Reservoir Hill for a week and the city only got about $60,000 in terms of like fees.
Yep.
And I'm pretty sure they made millions off of said movie. I think that we need to really think about it in terms of like where we really are. Especially as Channel 25 is coming to my district. Well, the thing I challenged the team with Channel 25 is how do we create a space where we can generate revenue off of the actual filming facilities for studios to lease from us the space so that we can generate revenue to maintain the building in the actual agency too.
For sure.
Yeah, revenue generating is definitely of top priority. We asked Mr. CFO if you could really help the administration how to push in that regard. I think the biggest thing or that came out recently that, again, kind of like the 83 camera, was the CFG Arena, one of the highest grossing arenas in the entire country. And we gave the garage away basically for the next 30 years. You know, so I mean, conflating the whole revenue forecast, you know, Bob has heard me kind of jump up and down about this. Conflating the whole revenue forecast to this parking stuff, you know, that's millions upon millions of dollars that fits right in between this gap of the deficit and revenue that we're collecting. So I mean, it's decisions like that that, again, incrementally, they add up. And, you know, I just ask that we continue to kind of push that from an administration perspective. Next up is Chairman Stokes, then after that, we have Councilwoman Ramos and then Chairman Bilak.
Thank you, Mr. President. Looking at the deficit from the state and the city, has there been any question or possibility? And people don't like this word, about raising taxes.
So what I can say is that as part of the fiscal 25 budget, everything right now is pre-decisional. This, you know, just sort of sets the landscape and in terms of how we approach the fiscal 25 budget, you know, we will have to look at what is, you know, the administration will have to look at what is the right mix of balancing actions from a revenue generation versus expenditure reduction perspective.
So that mean it's on the table?
I, everything at this point is pre-decisional in terms of what the final strategy will look like to balance this.
Okay, and just one other follow-up. Chairman Costello talked about the merger between DOT and Parking Authority. Think it's a great idea, but we don't want to lay nobody off either. Because you're talking about duplication of the same kind of services. So I really support that, but I don't want to see nobody getting laid off either because of the, called duplication of services also.
Certainly, and I, you know, obviously, any of those types of scenarios that were to be implemented, I think we have a lot of opportunities just given the vacancies that we have throughout the city to ensure that folks are plugged into solid opportunities and we avoid any sort of layoff situation.
Councilwoman Ramos.
Thank you, Mr. President. One last thing on the parking thing and then I've got a question. The, it's my understanding that the Police Commissioner is the top enforcement person and can assign enforcement however he wants to assign it. And it doesn't even matter what, I mean, he can assign the types of enforcement to various agencies. And this came up in a scenario around thinking about the sheriff and what other duties the sheriff could be doing in terms of enforcement. And so I just think that's something to look at, is that, you know, could there be other types of, you know, I don't, I don't know if that makes any sense. But it may only be with sworn, that he's allowed to do that and not anything else. But, and then we can talk about more about the parking thing later because that has been a long conversation today. But my question was, where are we on the 10-year plan? What's the next steps? When we were participating in those initial groups, I think there were a lot of ideas for revenue generation. And I'd much rather have those broader conversations around revenue generation than having to cut everything because we need to pay for basic services and there are things that we value as a city that we need to pay for. We just got to find the money. So just, can you let us know where that is and what the next steps are to, and even if any of those recommendations would then be folded into the next budget?
So coming out of the convening around the 10-year plan in the fall, you know, there have been, you know, additional subcommittees that have been identified of subcommittee experts in some of those different areas to come together and to dig into some of those, to dig into specific recommendations and to start building out what would be a set of recommendations. That work is ongoing and I think will extend past the fiscal 25 budget. I think the other thing is a number of the initiatives that were part of that initial package as well as additional ideas that have been brainstormed and will continue to be brainstormed, you know, will take multiple years in order to implement and multiple years in order to realize their impact. What I can say is, as we are working with the administration to build the fiscal 25 budget, we are doing it with those initiatives in mind and kind of understanding what the strategy would be around those initiatives, knowing that the work of finalizing that plan will potentially extend, you know, beyond the budget deadlines of fiscal 25.
Thank you. I haven't heard anything since the initial meeting. So I don't know whether there's subcommittee's meeting, whether we, council members have been included and I just missed it, it's entirely possible. And that might be a question for the Mayor's Office.
Most of the work coming out of September has been more sort of staff level, kind of pulling, continuing to pull together more information. And we'll continue to update the council as there's more forward progress on the plan.
Okay, thanks. Thank you, Mr. Chair, Mr. President.
Mr. Bilak.
Thank you, Mr. President, for convening the meeting and I've been able to follow along before getting here. I know you wrestled with this before, but I did want to get a little bit deeper with this because you just mentioned things, proper functions in certain places. Thinking about a city-owned hotel and obviously, that's been a big drain on the city fiscally. And then, could you talk a little bit about that, how that contributes to where we are? But then also, from a larger longitudinal perspective, you know, where we go from here and some of the challenges that are inherent with such an undertaking.
Yeah, so I can, I can speak to the hotel. So the, the hotel, there is, in our forecast, we have, we are required to chip in if the revenue that's generated from the hotel is not enough to pay the debt service. And so we have, this will now be, I think, the third or the fourth year that we've had to contribute additional money from the general fund to basically make that project whole. If the performance of the hotel improves and the revenues generated by the hotel are enough to pay the debt service that was issued many, many years ago when it was refinanced in, I think, 2018 or 19, we'll see that amount come down. So we're budgeted for $7 million per year out of the general fund to support the hotel on top of the proceeds that the hotel generates to pay the debt service. That happened because of COVID, because we had, you know, a terrible couple of years there and we're still recovering from that. As I said, if the hotel improves its performance, we could reduce that amount that we have to budget for that. And we do look at that as part of the budget process, we'll look at that again in the spring to see if we can reduce that amount. I saw there was some talk about sale too, but we did look at that about two years ago and the market for hotels, like at the, you know, in the COVID time, not a lot of people were looking to buy hotels during COVID. So it didn't at that time seem like a viable option. We would love to sell that or get out of that arrangement if we could, but it just isn't. There's so much debt service that's still outstanding that the city's on the hook for. We would have to sell, find a buyer and potentially generate additional resources from the city side to actually make that transaction work. So the financials just don't work on it is what we found. And again, that was about a year and a half, two years ago, we did that analysis.
No, no, thank you for that because, I mean, it's pretty helpful because I know it's a very challenging position to be in because there's the short term versus the long term, do you take the hit and when do you take it and how so?
Yep, yeah, that's right. And again, when we looked at this, it wasn't, the market wasn't great for hotel sale. And because we have debt service that goes out, I believe it goes out through 2040-something is when the debt service. I mean, we're still on the hook, I mean, the city, you know, backed that issue. And so we're still on the hook for those payments all the way out through 20, I think it's 2045 or 2046. And again, in the normal times, the proceeds from the hotel, the plan was that those proceeds would be enough to cover those debt service payments. But when the hotel's performance dropped off, there is a clause in that, in our agreement, that the city has to chip in up to a certain threshold to make sure that that debt can be, can be paid.
Mr. President, I have a follow-up question if the compliments.
Are you finished?
No, thank you, that was helpful, please go ahead.
Yeah, Councilwoman Ramos.
So I'm wondering why we can't use some of or part of the city's hotel that we already own for people experiencing homelessness and having to pay and helping to pay for, you know, some of those expenses. to pay for, you know, some of those expenses, given the M O H S money that's around, um, for, for, for that?
I mean, that's a tough question for you to answer, more of a, the, a question of the administration. I mean, this is really intended to be just a kind of financial thing. Definitely hear where you're coming from, um, Councilwoman. You know, I would assume that, you know, market-rate hotels, uh, different, uh, typically don't co-mingle, not saying it's right or wrong, with homeless population. But I guess we would probably ask that of the mayor's office of homeless services. I don't know if you guys are prepared.
I would just say it was meant to be a market-rate hotel, um, you know, very close to the convention center to help assist with booking events at the, at the, at the convention center.
Well, my reasoning here is, the hotel is losing money. People need housing. We have money to pay for a hotel or operations to put people in a hotel.
What do you mean we have money to pay for? I mean, we're contributing.
Well, we've got the M O H S money that is coming in from ARPA, so, I mean, I'm just posing it as a question, there may be a good answer.
ARPA, ARPA cannot, we looked very early on, ARPA can't pay for debt service. It's one of the things that's disqualified, um, that is not available to use, so.
But we already own the hotel, and instead of purchasing the hotels, or in addition to purchasing, or instead of purchasing hotels with ARPA money that we're using to purchase them.
So part of the, part of the challenge here is that while we own the hotel, the debt service on the hotel exceeds, exceeds the value of the hotel, and the debt service is guaranteed on the full faith and credit of the city of Baltimore, in addition to the revenue that the hotel generates. If we were to move a population that's experiencing homelessness into that specific site, that would drive occupancy down to likely single digits, and we would lose out on that additional revenue that is used to pay the debt service. Did I answer that correctly?
That, that, that's correct, yeah. The, the, the hotel has to be, you know, we want the hotel to be, um, you know, performing as best as possible, so that we can get out of the hole that we have, where we're spending general fund dollars.
Okay, that was my question. Is it, you know, I'm, I'm just asking the question about why we can't do.
Councilwoman, I, I'll make sure to get you a full summary of the kind of analysis, analysis and methodology that was used to identify the hotels, um, that we would be approaching to use for the unhoused population.
So, and, and I'm going back to that real quick. The, um, the answer earlier about where we are on purchasing the two hotels, um, I've, I've heard something different, um, in another conversation. So what I heard today was that we're still exploring what those would be, which it's two years later, so I don't know why it's taken that, taken that long. But my understanding from a separate conversation with M O H S, I believe, was we've identified them, and we're just in procurement, trying to deal with, you know, the contracting. So if you don't mind clarifying.
Yeah, there are, there have been, M O H S is exploring a couple of different scenarios. They've, they've received appraisals ba, on those different scenarios, and the issues right now are surrounding the appraisal versus the, the price that the owners are looking to sell.
Gotcha, okay.
And how we bridge that divide.
Okay, that makes a lot of sense, um, in terms of where we are, based on the first couple of conversations, so, okay. What's the timeline? What are we anticipating? Because we're about to go into another winter. Well, we're already here, basically.
I can say that there is a, an incredibly high level of urgency. I participate in calls at least weekly on that topic, and I know that my colleague, you know, colleagues who are closer to the project are working, are spending much more time on it. So I, I, what I can say is, um, under the, um, under the direction of the leadership from the mayor's office of homeless services, it's, it's one of, it's one of their very, very top priorities in order to move on as soon as possible.
So next winter, I hope?
They're also contending with the ARPA deadlines. We would have to have.
Oh, yeah, I mean, they have to spend that money.
Yep.
Yes.
Yeah, Councilwoman, I also just want to underscore that, you know, it's a high priority for M O H S, it's also one of the highest priorities for the state administrator and for the administration as a whole. We're in active negotiations at this point, so we don't want to divulge too many details as far as what the specifics are, and which hotels we may or may not be, um, speaking with, uh, which could, could potentially compromise, um, those negotiations.
Thank you.
Are we good on questions? All right, Madam Director?
Great, so I'll just, I'll just wrap this up here quickly. So again, this is our, our baseline scenario when we look out over the ten-year plan. We do look at different scenarios, um, uh, in order to understand what the, what that gap would look like. So this slide here is just showing, um, the, the cumulative gap, um, year over year. We can see this light blue line would be our optimistic scenario, where we would, you know, end up sort of ultimately being in a place of surplus. We have the, the baseline scenario that I just described, and then we have our most pessimistic scenario, where we would have a cumulative deficit of about five point five billion dollars. In the materials that I provided to you, I've explained sort of what are the, the differences between those scenarios. What I can say is, um, you know, generally, the, the difference between, um, baseline and, and optimistic is, on the optimistic side, we assume that, um, we're able to achieve a two, essentially, a two percent annual growth in, in most of our revenue sources, and that we continue to see growth in terms of property valuations and, and growing wages. Versus on the pessimistic side, you know, we would assume that we would see sort of an overall decline of about one and a half percent over our major revenue sources. That is essentially assuming like sort of a, a great recession, uh, scenario. On the expenditure side, uh, we, in terms of the, the pessimistic scenario, we assume that, you know, uh, these inflationary cost pressures that we're seeing continue, um, and we, you know, we continue to see those, um, sort of grow at a, at a faster pace than what we've seen, um, previously. Comparatively, uh, on the optimistic side, we would see, um, we would see, uh, inflation really taper off, um, and, and sort of a more steady rate of growth year over year. As we look to some of the, the risk areas that we just have to be mindful of, as we develop strategies for balancing the fiscal twenty-five budget, but also think about some of those longer-term strategies that would be part of, um, uh, our, our ten-year plan, you know, obviously, we, we need to, um, ensure that we're able to, um, maintain and sustain our, um, local share contribution to the schools based off of, um, the funding formula require, requirements, um, looking for ways that we align revenue and expenditure growth, again, so that we are sort of in a more normal period, uh, where the, where the growth rates for those two items are, are closer to one another, that we have some sort of ability to weather economic shifts, um, that would impact some of our major revenue streams, and then finally, um, how we ensure that we're able to keep pace, uh, for wage and legacy costs for, for our city employees. So happy to take any other questions?
I just have one additional question. The recent announcement of the steep cuts to transportation at the state level, does that have any implications on our deficit, or are we concerned, any concerns there?
So, uh, what, what we understand, uh, in terms of how those might impact us, is that, uh, we would not see the next level of increase in our H U R allocation that was previously anticipated. And so what it would likely do is, um, we would have the, we would have to have the conversation of sort of, um, how much funding is available for D O T capital from H U R, and how that interacts with the, the cost of the operating services that receive H U R funding.
How much money are we talking about, you think?
The, um, the H U R, like I said, um, the H U R number in fiscal twenty-four was a hundred and ninety-three point four million. We projected it would go up to two hundred and thirty-four point nine. That was reflective of the city's share growing, um, you know, the next step up. It's my understanding that, um, what they would propose, uh, what the initial proposal is, is that our twenty-four allocation, our twenty-five allocation would be consistent with our twenty-four allocation. So if that were to be the case, what I think would happen is, we would be able to maintain the current level of service for our operating services, and then we would, um, we would potentially not be able to do as much on the capital side as we had previously hoped.
Got it, thank you so much for that. Are there any additional questions or concerns?
Well, before we close out, uh, Madam Director, you always do an amazing job. Truly, truly appreciate your level of responsiveness and your thorough follow-through with us through emails and meetings and public forums, um, so I just want to really, really, um, say that the council appreciates you. You know, obviously, we're trying to mature in this well, in this realm of being part of the budget this way. Again, that's why we set up the finance and performance with Chairman Bullock. But while we had these hearings, I also want to say to the council members, you know, I think we came with some really good questions. The idea is that when we get into budget, a lot of these things that were kind of all forced in on you guys for two weeks, we've had a chance to kind of answer over the course of the year. That way, we could be more educated to really deal with the X's and O's of finance, uh, not maybe some of the operational stuff that would keep you guys here till twelve and one o'clock in the morning. So, you know, not to say that that's going to go away, you know, that's always been the, the practice of the council, but at least we're trying to do as much as possible to, to dig into the details around financing, um, as soon as possible. So we look to continue to partner and work with you. Thank you for the opportunity. If there aren't any questions or concerns, we're going to close out with this hearing. Thank you so much.
Thank you, guys.
Meetings adjourned.